It's our pleasure to welcome in Anisa Moore, the first African American to be elected to the Long Beach City Council. And Anisa is also going to talk about her book. And this was the front page of the Long Beach Herald just a few weeks ago, with Anisa on the cover, talking about her book. So without any further ado, Anisa, welcome to the show.
Thank you. It's always an honor and a privilege to be a part of the show. Thank you so much for the invitation. And thank you for allowing me to be a part of this Black History Month celebration. Well, where do I begin? There's so much to say. Well, first, I think it's important for our viewers to understand that Black History Month was actually discovered or developed in 1926. This was an idea, a concept, that the late Dr. Carter G. Woodson developed in 1926. He was actually a graduate from Harvard University. And he realized, because he was studying history, he realized that he knew very, very little about African American life and African American culture. And so this African American male decided to go ahead and work with people, work with community groups, to discover what we called, or name something that we called, the Negro History Week. And then as a result, in 1976, the presidents decided to move forward. President, he went out. Okay, President Carter decided in 1976 to move forward with Black History Month. And every president since that time in 1976 has declared February as Black History Month. So I think it's very important for us to understand that this is a part of American culture, but also that Black History is a part of American history. And that's what makes it so very, very special. I'm excited tonight because I believe that I've had the opportunity to also be a part of history. As a part of my decision to run back in 2015 and to successfully win in 2016, to be the first African American woman to actually be a part of, to be elected to city council in 2016. So I am proud to be a resident of Long Beach, but also proud to be a part of that history and also proud of all of the entire Long Beach community in making that decision. I'm also excited about the book.
Yeah.
And thank you so much, Howie, for thinking of me and for inviting me to just talk a little bit about the book. Hopefully, people have had the opportunity to purchase the book. And I'll just talk a little bit about the concept of 11226, "Just a Girl from Brooklyn." And 11226 is the actual zip code, similar to 11561. But 11226 represented a wonderful period of time in my life, growing up in Flatbush, Brooklyn. And I had the opportunity to live in a Flatbush community. My brother went to Brooklyn College. We were a part of a unique period of time, growing up during the '70s and being there all the way through the 1990s and just seeing the transitions within Brooklyn as a whole. But just really being a part of the amazing culture that Brooklyn has. And we all know that Brooklyn now is one of the fastest-growing places in terms of boroughs that people look to live in because of its rich culture. 11226 came out of this concept that I wanted to do something to pay tribute to those individuals that I had the opportunity to cross paths with during my time and my life in the borough of Brooklyn. And then as a result, I said, "Well, 11226, that's just not enough. I want to say something." And in talking with lots of friends, and I want to thank my brother, Ryan Moore, and also Marcus Tinker, who said, "Well, what about 'Just a Girl from Brooklyn'?" And I said, "I love it. I love the title. Let's go with it." And so that's where the concept comes from. As you can see, the train is key to this. And I wanted to really highlight my journey. Why? Because I had the opportunity, just being in high school, because this is a collection of poems over a 10-year, going close to 20-year period of time. And so this journey, being on the subway at that time, the Number Two train, was really where I had the opportunity to write the majority of my poetry. And so I decided to go ahead and just give people the flavor, and that is create that context, that a lot of the writing was done on the actual Number Two subway train. And I had the opportunity to just see people, as you just kind of meet people, or you watch people, or things happen on the train. I would just have the opportunity for a long train ride to just kind of write poems, write about feelings, write about experiences. And I've had the opportunity to do that with the book. So the book is about love, it's about life, it's about everyday life in terms of meeting people on the train. Then it's also a little bit about politics. You know, I have a tribute in the book to Dr. Martin Luther King, to Nelson Mandela, to Barack Obama. And then also to everyday people, like my great-grandmother, who didn't have the opportunity to see this book being published, and my grandmother, both who really were a part of what we call the Great Migration during the early 1920s, where African Americans left the South to come to the North in pursuit of a better life. So the book has all of that in it, and I believe it's rich. And I'm excited that I'd be here tonight to share a little bit with you.
Okay. Awesome. Now, in honor of Black History Month, Anisa, I thought it'd be a cool thing to put together a list of 15 people. I'm calling it the Fabulous Fifteen.
Wow, 15.
People across the spectrum who made such an impact. And I basically gave it to the United States. People who made an amazing impact through the broad spectrum of sports, entertainment, politics, civil rights. So I'm going to do the top 15, and after each one, I'll introduce the person and have you expand on it. You like that idea?
Let's go for it.
All right, number one. We've got to start with Martin Luther, the Reverend Martin Luther King.
Oh, wow. There's so much to say about Martin Luther King. He was an amazing person because he really worked to build bridges between people. He brought everyone together because everyone within his world was a part of what he called a rich humanity. And one of the things that I'll never forget that he said, he said that racial understanding is not something that we find, but it's something that we create. And I think that's really where we are even now, in terms of 2019. And he was willing to do that. He was able to stand for what was right. He was able to bring so many different people together at that particular period of time. And as we think now, I said, "Well, that's what we need in the world today." Right? He brought Catholics and Jewish people and Black Americans together and Latino people and gay people and straight people. He brought everybody together, all right? And I think that, to me, makes him a tremendous leader and a tremendous person to really honor.
Okay. And our number two spot, Barack Obama.
Oh, wow. Very close, okay. I think he really had the opportunity to become the Dr. Martin Luther King of his time, of his generation. But also, I think, what I really appreciate about him is a fact that we had the opportunity to really see that he was a family man. Within the media, sometimes the media tends to portray African American males as being, you know, deadbeat dads. And here was a man who really loved his daughters, loved his wife. It was all about family. But then also, he was able to pull in, what we want to call the millennials, he was able to pull in the college students. He was able to pull everyone into not only his politics, but into his life. He used and engaged in social media in a way that other presidents never really had the opportunity to do. But then also, he really focused in on the fact that all of us are a part of this great place that we call the United States of America.
Okay. For number three, we're going to turn to the sports world.
Oh, let's see.
Jackie Robinson.
Oh, number 42. Amazing. Breaking barriers. This is a man with such great courage, right? We know that he was skilled tremendously as an athlete, but he was also one that really had courage. Courage to step up and to really integrate sports like never before. I'm actually a baseball fan. And again, coming from Brooklyn, obviously, everyone loved Jackie. But we want to say that he crossed barriers at a time that it was so very, very difficult to do. And he did it, and he did it with dignity, and he did it with class. He was a class act. But not only that, he paved the way for so many other people to integrate into other sports. So he was really a trendsetter, a trailblazer, and a man of great dignity, a man of great respect.
Okay. Number four. I think it's about time we had a woman in this list.
I'm waiting.
Number four, Rosa Parks.
Ah, Rosa Parks. She is an amazing woman. There were other women that came before her that actually did the same thing. But in her situation, what makes her situation so very different is that she was willing to be the face of the movement. And there would really be no Martin Luther King without Rosa Parks. She had amazing courage to sit on that bus, and she was willing to die for it. Which means that sometimes in life, if we're going to change things, we have to recognize that sometimes we have to make sacrifices, and sacrifices cost. But she was willing to do that. And one of the things that she said, she talked about the fact that sometimes you have to look fear in the face. If you're not willing to do that, then you're not willing to really embrace and be a person that could create change. And so she's a strong woman, a woman that all of us can follow. Because she was all about the fact that we have to make change and we have to take courage in order to make that possible.
Excellent. For number five, we're going to go back to 1936 and talk about courage. Number five, Jesse Owens.
Oh, wow. This is, this is an amazing list. Same thing. Not only, I mean tremendous physical ability to run and to win races, but the level of determination that this man had in light of dealing with racial issues and challenges that he had to face right here in the United States, but then being challenged at that time by Germany, that there was this, I guess, feeling or attitude that African Americans were inferior, were an inferior race. He stood against death threats. He stood against many people within his own community that were afraid and didn't believe in him. And he was able to rise above all of that. And so a man of great courage, a man of great strength, and to also understand that even after he was able to succeed and to win, he went back into, in quotes, "normal" life. He just became an everyday person again. Which means that he also was a man of great humility.
Okay. Number six on the list. Now, Anisa, I know you love to write.
Yes.
So number six, I have a great writer, James Baldwin.
Yes. Oh, God. All right. James Baldwin, an amazing writer. There's so much to say about him. I don't even know where to begin because amazing, being able to see beyond, to see beyond his time. His books were not only inspiring, but his books really challenged the American way of life as he saw it. And it was unfortunate that he had to actually leave the country for a period of time and actually live in Paris because he really felt strongly about this issue of race and class and even sexual orientation. So he was really waiting before his time, but he used his words to transform the society and to make us think about what's really acceptable within our society. And he did that. And he's just really an amazing, amazing person that made tremendous contributions to not only African American literature, but American literature.
Awesome. Number seven is right on the lines of James Baldwin, another brilliant poet, Langston Hughes.
All right. So I have to say that out of everyone on this list, I am thrilled that you would choose Langston Hughes. I was actually inspired to write. A lot of my poetry, I write in the style of Langston Hughes. Langston Hughes is one of my favorite poets. In my mind right now, I'm thinking "Mother to Son," I'm thinking about "A Dream to Fird," but even more, oh, people sometimes forget that he was not only a great poet and an American poet, but he was also a playwright. He wrote several plays and short stories. And so I really, he's one of my favorites. I read his book every year during the summer. I try to read a lot of his poetry, and it really inspires me, and it actually inspired my book. So Langston Hughes, yes.
All right. All right, the next one, the one and only, at number eight, Oprah Winfrey.
Ah, Oprah. Where would we be without Oprah? Another woman who really transformed American television. She really transformed American television. She is a trailblazer. Yes, she started, had humble beginnings in terms of her television work in the city of Chicago. But when she was able to make that leap of faith and move into the whole Oprah, I want to say dynasty, she's created everything from magazines to her endorsement. She's, she's on a whole other level. She's one of the richest African American women in the United States. And she's also one of the richest African American women when we look at the list in terms of, on an international level. She has taken her image, and she's used that image to not only inspire African American women, but women all across the globe. And so, again, another amazing, phenomenal woman.
And you know what? Let's expand on that a little bit. My feeling is, when she made that speech, there was a groundswell of enthusiasm. And I personally believe that if Oprah decided to run for president, she would have been an extremely formidable candidate. And I firmly believe she would have had a very good chance of being our next president of the United States.
Absolutely. Because everyone, she's a household name. People feel that they can relate to her. She transcends race and gender. And I think that's so very important within our society today. And that's what really makes her a powerful force.
Okay. At number nine, Anisa, do you like to dance?
Yes.
All right. This man opened the door for so many young dancers throughout the world. The one and only, at number nine, Alvin Ailey.
Wow, okay. I think, I have to tell you, and maybe I'll just tell all of you, it has to be on your bucket list. You have to see Revelations. Revelations, it's a complete journey in dance that really looks at the African American experience. And Alvin Ailey and his ability to not only just become, to move into the dance world and the expertise that he brings, but to inspire generations and generations of dancers, to inspire them to really go to that next level. A level where in years past, they were not allowed to enter into that arena. And he made that possible. And not only did he make it possible, he created a rich legacy for people like Judith Jameson and so many others that we look at today. And so he was a trendsetter, a trailblazer, and his legacy lives on.
Okay. Number 10. This is going to make my videographer, Rocco Passifull, be very, very happy.
All right.
At number 10, the man that took pop culture to a whole new level. The one and only, Michael Jackson.
Oh, yes. Michael Jackson. I guess I'm dating myself. I grew up just thinking, "I just need to meet Michael Jackson." But I think everyone had that same feeling. Michael Jackson, to me, he was a musical genius, musical genius. Again, from the time that he started with ABC 123 all the way to Off the Wall, to Man in the Mirror. We could just go on and on. He just really, he captivated Americans across the country with his music, with his charisma, with his personality. Again, with his amazing dance and ability to just captivate audiences with his ability to entertain. He, to me, he's truly missed. Yes, people say, "Well, what about Prince?" I love Prince too. But Michael Jackson is an icon, and he's truly missed at this time.
Absolutely. You know, we've touched on so many different genres and different things. I had to put this man on the list because I think when it comes to comedy, this genius opened the door for Eddie Murphy and so many more. At number 11, Richard Pryor.
Ah, Richard Pryor. Wow. He, his level, his ability to use humor and jokes, he took it to another level. Because he just wasn't just telling jokes. He was telling stories. But then he was also engaging people in political dialogue, something that people were very hesitant to do back in the early '70s. And he successfully did that. Not only that, he was able to move into television in terms of film, film and television. And all of his films were successful because he had that flair. And again, another person that, he really opened up the doors for Eddie Murphy. Right? All of these other people. Even today, we have a lot of comedians that still use that particular style. I'm thinking of Steve Harvey. All of these people came out of that rich tradition of being able to engage the stage. And Richard Pryor was able to do that and do it successfully.
All right. All right. At number 12, how about another courageous woman?
Sure.
All right. Harriet Tubman, at number 12.
Harriet Tubman. All right, now, that's a courageous woman. She had the opportunity, once she became free, once she became free during this, during the period of slavery, that wasn't enough for her. She wanted to make trips back and forth to free other people. She was able to successfully make over 99 trips where she could actually help other people come to freedom. That, that's a woman of character. That's a woman of great strength. That she was willing to even risk losing her freedom by trying to emancipate others. And so, again, she is not only a trailblazer, but she is on another level. She is a woman of great courage, great strength, great determination. She was also known to still carry her own weapon for protection. But she was also a very smart woman, strategic woman. And later years, she had the opportunity to really just give speeches for other women who at that time were abolitionists. And so, again, a great woman of courage and strength.
Okay. Number 13 actually has great ties to Long Beach. Tell you why. Number 13 is Muhammad Ali.
Ah.
One of his very best friends was Billy Crystal, who grew up in Long Beach. And after Hurricane Sandy, when Billy Crystal turned to Muhammad Ali, Muhammad Ali said, "I'll do whatever." And it was Muhammad Ali who helped raise, along with Billy Crystal, but most of it came from Muhammad Ali, a million dollars to Long Beach. So at number 13, the one and only, Muhammad Ali.
The greatest, wow. I'm just speechless right now when I think about his contribution to American society. One, his contribution to American culture. There was just nobody like the great Muhammad Ali. I'm just thinking back, back in the days, watching boxing matches and remembering his interaction with, I believe it was Howard Cosell, having those great interactions. But then also, he was also a part of a great movement. He was a man with many, many principles. He stood for those principles. Obviously, he was very vocal about the war. He was very vocal about the situation with respect to the Civil Rights Movement. And he was able and willing to sacrifice some of his career just to prove a point because he was a man with great morals and ideals. But not only that, he really opened up and transformed American boxing as we know it. It became boxing and entertainment. But he really, he was amazing to watch in the ring, a strategist. He didn't just knock you out. He played with you a little bit, and then he knocked you out. But really a strategist. But then, on the lighter side, a real philanthropist. He really gave to so many different people, to so many different charities. He really believed in being a blessing to other people because he found himself in a wonderful place. And also, if you not have the opportunity, I encourage people to, there are several versions of the movie, but to see if you can actually watch the movie where he's in the movie in terms of his life. And then you can also obviously watch The Greatest. There's another version of the movie. And that particular song is still a song that's popular. Obviously, Whitney Houston popularized the song. It was originally done by George Benson. So again, Muhammad Ali, again, a pop icon.
Okay. Number 14. Not only a great athlete, but a man that has to stand up to a lot of racism and bigotry. At number 14, the great Hank Aaron.
Oh, wow. Hank. What can I say? Very similar in terms of being a sports icon. His skill set, his physical ability, his ability to just, he just was really, when he was on the field, the level of just magnetism in terms of how people responded to him on the field because of his ability has been documented and continues to be documented. I'll say this, I'll say that, yes, another man of great courage. The death threats came. People would, you know, throw things, derogatory things towards him as he was out on the field. You know, obviously, they were racially charged, you know, throwing fried chicken, throwing a piece of watermelon, but trying to intimidate him. But he was able to stand because he recognized his worth. He recognized that he was really playing for something greater than himself. And so that's why he is still and remains and will always be one of the greatest.
Right. Absolutely. And the list. Anisa, I know you love music, so I picked a, there's so many to choose from.
There's so many.
I could have chose Nat King Cole, Duke Ellington.
Oh, I love Duke.
So many. But the one I chose to end was the great Louis Armstrong.
Ah, "A Wonderful World." People, first of all, again, a pioneer, a pioneer within the jazz world. He was one of those people that, he was able to help jazz in terms of African American artists cross over. Because remember, there was a whole period of big bands. And he was able to do that because of his music, because of his style, because of his personality, because of his ability to really communicate his talent and his gift. He was an amazing musician. But also, if you have the opportunity to go back and look at early black and white films, looking at the '40s and some of the early '50s, you'll see that he's prominent in a lot of films that featured big bands. A lot of what we call film noir's, which are movies during the '40s and '50s that look at the war and what happened after the war. And they're shot in a very dark style. And they tend to, while they're solving a crime or a mystery, they'll have bands. And Louis Armstrong was featured in a lot of those movies. He is a great cultural icon. And again, his music really transformed the world. And even today, when we think about that song, "What a Wonderful World," we think of him and we know that he, his music has really changed us for the better.
Absolutely. So, did you like my list?
I love your list.
I think we should keep going though, don't you think?
I love your list. There's so many more, and I think you're right.
I want to touch on a few more that didn't make it. You know, because it was so, I kept changing, there was so many.
It's hard.
But I want to touch on a few more.
Sure.
Because a lot of people I chose were people because I felt that they opened the door for others. Like Richard Pryor opened the door for people in comedy. Alvin Ailey opened the door for people in dance. Jackie Robinson obviously opened the door for so many great baseball players. But there's so many others. First of all, in tennis, the great Arthur Ashe.
Yeah.
So many. I think he was the first great African American tennis player. And Tiger Woods in golf. And those two were the first African American, and they both had so much success, I think they inspired generations.
Absolutely. And Arthur Ashe, again, another humanitarian. He was a great humanitarian. Not only was he an amazing tennis player, but he was a great humanitarian. Obviously, he really worked for several causes at that particular time. He was really working to make sure that people understood the nature of the AIDS virus. And he really worked hard and was a champion at that particular time. But we also know that his skill set really inspired African Americans to pursue this particular field and to be a part of the tennis world, which was something that just didn't happen in the past. In the same way, when we talk about this concept of transitioning and focusing in on getting people involved, both people were able to do that and to do it well. I'm also thinking about Althea Gibson, who also kind of pushed this whole concept for African American women as well. And then Tiger. I remember people everywhere, people who were never really engaged in golf, saying, "Oh, my gosh, I've got to watch Tiger. I've got to see what he's doing and to see..." I've gotta see what he's doing and to see how he transformed the sport." And now, today, to know that there are so many young people who are engaged in the sport today as a result of what he was doing. There were other African Americans involved with golf. However, they were not a part of this whole, I guess, the media and the commercial aspect of really getting one person who could be an icon, a representative for the golf industry.
Okay, another one I thought about. You know, it's so hard because I really want them because I think all the ones I put on were great.
Yeah, great.
But one guy I gotta bring up. You know, talk about opening the door for great actors. How about the great Sidney Poitier?
Ah, yes. And if you're a TCM fan, you know that The Defiant Ones was just on the other day. But so many different films where he really transformed our hearts and minds. I'm thinking In the Heat of the Night, like I said. Guess Who's Coming to Dinner. Which made a powerful statement during the 1960s with respect to interracial dating and relationships. So, there's just so much. Obviously, In the Heat of the Night, he was able to, again, take on a different type of role, being that he was a detective, and he was able to show that anyone, it's not really about your race. Anyone who has the gift of acting can aspire to be in any role. And he was able to do that, and to do that with such dignity. And again, he, his acting ability and his ability to just transform a screen continued for decades. And I think it's important for people to understand that it went on for decades, and his legacy lives on.
Yeah, another one I wanna mention is Archelle. He's the first African American to be a head football coach in NFL. And, you know, there's several African American coaches today, and he was the trailblazer. He was the first. He got the door open.
Yep, and I think that's so very important because sometimes we, when we talk about African American culture in life, we rarely talk about football in that way. We really talk about the whole concept that we can be outside of just basketball or baseball. And he was able to do that. He was able to just kind of move right into football. And we know that today, we have several coaches as a result. Because the key is, you have to have one person to open up that door so that other people can say, "This is an option. This is something that's possible for me."
Yeah, it's wonderful to see, like, you know, you go back and, for instance, Barack Obama. And, you know, right now, you've got two formidable Democrats who are running, Kamala Harris and Cory Booker. Cory Booker. And, you know, that happened even ten years ago, twenty years ago. People say, "African American president," but now, because of Barack Obama, both are very, very serious candidates and have chances to win. And if Barack Obama opened the door for both great candidates.
Right, no, absolutely. And both candidates, Kamala Harris as well as Cory Booker, as you can see, really, you see them, you feel the energy, you feel the whole Obama aura in terms of their ability to just transcend race and to be able to say, you know what? We're just Americans, and we love our country, and we wanna serve. And that's really what's happening all across the country. People are saying to themselves, "Wow, I too can make a difference. I can do this because someone else has paved the way."
All right, I think a great way to end this segment is for Anisa to read a poem from the book. And the one I picked out is because she talked about the train. So right here, I picked it out, so Anisa, take it away.
All right, sure, thank you. One winter night, cold. I had sat among many. There was one who had stood alone. He spelled words, the language of life. It told a story, his story, pain, violation. He spelled his experience on this cold, lonely night. It told a grief, confusion. He spelled M-A-N-I-A-C, maniac. He continued. I pretended not to hear his truth. I was one among many. But he spoke. He spoke of hope. He spoke of future. He spoke of his need. He couldn't spell them, but he stepped off the train because it was too hard to stand alone.
That was awesome. Anisa, we wanna thank you. I couldn't have picked a better person to celebrate Black History Month. This was a, would you say, a riveting segment? So thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to be on the Halftime Howie Show. Thank you so much for always welcoming me, and I always look forward to being here. And thank you for what you're doing because obviously, you make our lives so much better and so much richer. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you so much, Anisa.